Okay, am I...
Yes, we do. I move that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to issue an award for facilities maintenance management services to Sadekso Incorporated as described in RFP number 25-024. The Board authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with the contractors upon the expiration of the protest period.
Second? Second by Ms. Frazier. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Online? Pastor Gordon?
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Pastor Gordon?
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Pastor Gordon's responding, I cannot hear him. Can we fix the sound, please? Okay, Pastor Gordon and Mr. Small and Ms. Gordon, can you use the chat to give your vote, please? Yes, see, Pastor Gordon is aye. Mr. Small is aye. Ms. Gordon, could you provide a chat, please? And can we please fix the sound? Can we call Ms. Gordon to find out her vote? Abstain, so okay, motion carries. Next item, please.
Second motion. I move that the Board of Education approve addendum number one Athletic Fields Ground Maintenance Services Contract with Brightview Landscape Services Incorporated as presented.
Second? It's a second? Second, by Ms. Frazier. Any discussion? Mr. Smith?
Yes, unfortunately, I will not be able to support this motion because I've asked several times, and I've asked in the Operations Committee meeting about these grounds and fields and how do we know that these fields are getting maintained and what proof that we have and who are we sending out there, who, what, where, when, why, and how I've not been gotten, have not been gotten back to in terms of that information. And this is a lot of money to spend and to not have that information to understand, be able to process that. And I stated also as well, I didn't know of a field in a tract in our district that, I mean, yeah, I mean, of a tract in particular that has not been maintained, so what it gives me concern because to me a field and a tract go hand in hand, and if one is messed up and the other one, I'm not exactly sure what may be done. So therefore, I can definitely not, I cannot support this motion due to that today. So I will not be supporting this.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor here in the building signify by saying aye. Aye, that's four. Pastor Gordon? Pastor Gordon, aye. Okay. Mr. Small? He's not, he's a nay?
He's a nay.
Okay. And Ms. Gordon?
She's abstaining.
Abstaining? And, okay, so the motion, motion does not carry.
Is that right?
Four-two, one extension. That's a f six, f set of six votes. All right, motion, motion does not carry. Okay, motion does not carry. Okay, let's go to...
Do you want to say anything before I make this next motion? Do you want to say anything before I make this motion? Okay. Next motion. I move that the Board of Education not support the use of any school operations or debt service funds for the construction of any non-district facilities.
Second by Mr. Dallas. Any comments? Okay, no comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Mr. Smith?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain? Okay. Online? Pastor Gordon? Aye. Mr. Small? Aye, that's six. And Ms. Gordon? Abstain. Okay, we have six, four, and two extensions. Motion carries. Okay, is that the last? All right. Next item is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Ms. Frazier, do you have to make that motion? Second? Second by Mr. Dallas. Any discussion? Or none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Aye? Mr. Smith?
I, aye.
Okay. Online, Pastor Gordon? Pastor Gordon, aye. Mr. Small? Mr. Small, aye. And Ms. Gordon? Absent, okay. Motion, motion carries. Please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for a moment of silence.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item is points of celebration. Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Colonel Guyer. This evening, under, can you hear me? This evening, under points of celebration, we have a custodial service awards, and tonight we're recognizing often unsung group of heroes in our schools, our custodial staff. Their dedication, hard work, and commitment to keeping our schools clean, safe, and welcoming do not go unnoticed, and tonight, we celebrate their outstanding service. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Robert Otting, our Chief Operations Officer, who will share more about the custodial service award and help us recognize these honorees.
Thank you, sir. One thing I'd just like to say is this kind of came out of the Operations Committee. There's a request to bring forward quarterly custodial employees, and this is something that we're glad to do today and look forward to honoring, and I think this is going to end up being very special. But on top of that, we're looking in the future to expand this and formalize it as a yearly event. So with that being said, I will go ahead and start ABM. I know, Brandon, why don't we hold you off for last and see if, we have one person coming that is a little late, so we'll hold off and see if they show up. So I'm going to start with the Bud Group, Reggie Smar, if you want to come up and introduce your employee.
I have to speak. Hello, hello. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm Resinal Smar, I'm with the Bud Group. This is my first year with Bud Group. Of course, this is our first year working in Beaufort County, and it's been a really good experience so far. And I tell you, this young lady that I have here today, she has really made my job a lot easier. Her work ethic, her attendance, and her customer service are exactly what we're looking for here at the Bud Group. With no further ado, Ms. Elaine Scott? If you could come up, please. She is my employee of, she was Employee of the Month for, I believe, oh, what was it, January, February? And then she's also the Employee of the Quarter. So she's doing a great job and look forward to many more days and weeks and hopefully years. Congratulations.
All right. Next, we're going to go with Interstate. This is also their first year, and I'm going to introduce for, their manager is Yeni Freeman, but I'm going to introduce for her Karen Giants? If you, Giants, Giants, if you'd come forward, please? And I tell you what, since Steve Skirditch is here, Shidrick, I'm sorry, sorry, I'm nervous. I'm excited, so that's my problem right now. Thank you, Karen. I'm going to let him say a few words.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. So Karen Giants is definitely a great custodian, and one thing I want to say about her is when you have a school as large as ours, the number of students we have, no matter what the mess, she responds back with a nice smile. She's always willing to help, so even when she responds on the radio, you can hear the smile in her voice. So she's truly awesome, but there's a couple of things we can celebrate tonight, too. She's the Employee of the Quarter, but also, she also is celebrating something else today. Today, Karen became a U.S. citizen. So... So...
All right, last and not, but not least, and it's going to be hard to top, Brandon. So Mr. Brandon Clark from ABM, I believe we had some people that weren't able to make it today. So there's, you want to say a few words about?
Yeah, sure. So Brandon Clark, RDO for ABM. First off, unfortunately, Sandra couldn't make it today. She had prior commitments that she had already committed to. But we did want to take the opportunity to, you know, publicly display our appreciation for Sandra. She has helped quite a bit over at Okati Elementary School. And as you know, during any transition, that can be kind of a difficult time as you try to get the right people in the right seat. Sandra has stepped up to the plate every single day. She's put in the extra hours. She's gone above and beyond to make sure that the teachers and the administrative staff are happy with the service levels that they're receiving. So I wish she could be here today. She is certainly a superstar. Sorry, but we also want to thank the board for actually taking the time to give us the opportunity to recognize her publicly and thanks to the superintendent as well. Sandra Benegas. Yes?
Yes, thank you.
That is it. That concludes our points of celebration this evening.
And a quick point of order, the motion, if you'll let the record reflect, Robin, that that second motion about Brightview actually did pass. The final vote was five yeses, two nos, and one abstention, and that is an approved motion.
Okay, thank you.
And also, I just wanted to say from Operations Committee, the, for the first, Mrs. Bemid on my heart, not my mind, Mrs. The first award?
The first custodial, Ms. Scott.
Ms. Scott, she's over at Salona. I just, being that she didn't have anybody to speak on her behalf, I would definitely say as a board member, I definitely appreciate her. And I, she, she's very active when we're in the building. She helps out with the kids and she definitely does her job. She's very nice. She says, "How you doing?" She speaks, and she's always visible. You always hear her throughout the building. So I just want to say, I definitely appreciate it. And one time, the principal said, "Now, she a big help. Now, if we lose her, I got problems." So I just wanted to let her know that she definitely appreciated in that building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right. We don't have any first public comments. Public, first public comments have to be addressing items on the agenda. We do have some public comments for the second period, and if you wish to make a comment on the second period, you can still have time to get the forms in. Chair's report, I have no report today. We'll go to the committee report. First committee report is the Finance Committee. Mr. Dallas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll give a brief overview. I'd actually like to have our CFO, Ms. Crosby, come up because she can speak with some precise details about the tremendous work that the Finance Group is doing. But some, an overview, there's been a significant focus on continuing the work done by the prior Finance Committee Chairs, sitting to my right, Colonel Guyer, as well as members who have focused on really helping and targeting, along with Ms. Crosby and the superintendent, how can we efficiently use our reports? So some of the things that are being done are developing data using graphs, reducing the verbiage, reports which highlight the exceptions to variances. So a reader's eyes and mind immediately goes to where there's a negative delta to a particular variance year over year and current budget year as well. We also, they're also continuing there for the leverage new technologies such as AI. Ms. Crosby has informed about using AI to also help lighten the load on her particular workforce, which is always commendable. One of the things that happened is a tight review of the Transparency Report, which is a lot, is 71 pages, and each page can have up to 65 entries. But those reports are vital to us making sure we're fulfilling our responsibility to provide financial oversight in a very precise and particular way and protect the reputation of the institution. All of these have been underway for some time, and it's noteworthy that the district has won awards for the financial integrity and performance. And the cohorts that are involved reflect that, and we want to just say thank you to them. Now, another key point is the collaboration with our bond advisors and attorney to improve the efficiency of financial benefits accruing due to earnings from bond premium and also interest earned from prior years' projects. So we actually have an efficiency mechanism where we are able to capture dollars by making sure that we are managing things very tightly. And I would also like to note that the Finance Committee's involvement and Ms. Crosby and her team with the wellness policy, which is critically important in supporting the improvements in healthy living lifestyles where the district consciously complies with federal and state requirements of nutrition and beneficial exercise time. When I read through the documents, it's pretty impressive how much the school districts, the state and federal governments focus on our kids being healthy. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Crosby, and she can speak to some of the details and other things that she's working on. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. Just a brief run-through of the items on the agenda for the June 12 Finance Committee. Each month, we provide a series of transparency reports, which we are working on, as Mr. Dallas mentioned, a more visual approach to those reports. They are rather lengthy and volumous. So we plan to continue to our work on that more visual aspect, infographic, and that sort of thing. So my staff are diligently working on that. We also worked, discussed the monitoring report for OE5 Financial Planning, and that was presented for approval. This is a board policy, and this report summarizes the administration's compliance with board policies relating to the annual budget, which we have now completed. And we have provided some of the details of the individual policies within each subsection. Since it is a board policy, it will be, there will be a motion following this presentation for approval of OE5, and so we have prepared that for you all. Bond date, update was provided as well. Most notable information includes a recent bond issue for the 2023 referendum in the amount of $132.2 million. It was delivered to the county. The cash was wired to the county treasurer on May 29. And as Mr. Dallas mentioned again, we're in the, in a position where we were able to generate $3 million of bond premiums. And so that is good news. We have additional cash on hand if needed for that project. Additionally, we will have a, this evening, a little later this evening, toward the end of the evening, we will have an 8% bond issue for $30 million, and it funds the 2027 8% projects that were recently approved by the board. So this will fund, this will allow us to issue the bond on those projects. Next item was a federal funding update by staff. We still have two areas, two particular grants or allocations that we're looking for, an allocation from the state or federal government, federal government. One is a directly coming from the federal government, and that's the MSAP grant. And so that is the grant for the first round. It is for the northern side of the county, and we're in our fifth year of that five-year grant. So we're still looking for authorization. From Congress has been delayed. The Department of Ed has actually released the funds to the U.S. Treasury, but we are still waiting on the final authorization from, from the Treasury. Also, we, earlier in the week, we had, at our last meeting on June 12, we indicated that several title funds, federal funds like Title I, Title III, Title IV, had been delayed. We've actually received all of them but one. So we have been allocated all of the title funds, including Title I, which is one of the largest, and Title III and IV, but we're still waiting on Title II, which is about $900,000 a year. And those are for professional developments. So we do expect them to be authorized. I'm hoping that the next report to the Finance Committee will indicate that all funds have been released. That is my hope and belief, that that will truly happen. And so we're, but we're making efforts to make sure that we have things in place if that does not occur. Again, SS 42, the District Wellness, is an administrative regulation. It requires two minor changes. Since this is an admin reg and not a board policy, it just is required for information, and there were two minor changes we needed to make. We're going to get that updated on our website, link it to our triennial report, and then we'll be all in compliance with the state, who is very, very interested in this topic and is on us every week to make sure we're full, in full compliance with that. We did have a wellness committee meeting. Ms. Frazier was gracious enough to come and attend for it with us and was very helpful in us working on goals and setting those goals for the next year. So there'll be more to come in that area. We'll be getting more on the website as we get these policies up and in compliance with the state. And lastly, the next meeting is scheduled for August 14, 2025, and that concludes my report.
Questions? Any questions or comments online?
Yes, it does.
Okay, that concludes your report.
We have motions coming out of the committee report.
We, we have a motion coming out of the committee?
Yep.
A couple of them, actually. First motion, I move, go ahead.
Just one, OE5.
Yeah, but then, but they, okay.
The others are another topic.
Okay, perfect. I move that the Beaufort County Board of Education accept the monitoring report for OE5 Financial Planning.
Second by Mr. Dallas. Any discussion? Questions? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Online, Pastor Gordon?
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Pastor Gordon, I have it. Mr. Small? Small votes, aye. Ms. Frazier, Ms. Gordon? Don't see Ms. Gordon vote? Do you see her? Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. And the next item is our Legislative Committee. Mr. Dallas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would like to just give a brief update on what the Legislative Committee has been doing, and I applaud all the committee members and the entire board members and those who have provided input. Starting back in March, we solicited areas for prioritization, and we got quite a list that came in from various committee members and board members. Just to share with some of, with you some of those legislative actions that we wanted to at least prioritize and review and become comfortable with were S17, S28, S125 from the state, and then from the House were S3240, I mean, H3245, 3435, 3455, 3459, 3802, 4163, and 4549. So those are ones that were submitted back in that time period. We had a second solicitation on March 14. In that time, as we've grown as a committee and understanding what the, our role can be and how we can actually help benefit the school districts, not only here but statewide, we thought we should take a look and familiarize ourselves very, very much with the new funding formula, with the athletics, with school choice, school vouchers, Bill of Rights, teachers' rights, board members' insurance statewide, and then the SRO bill. So things that affect each of the school districts, excuse me, in the state of South Carolina. And then since that time, there have been additional items that we are looking at, such as Google, Apple, Facebook, those apps that need to verify the age of the participants before they can download apps or make app purchases. Why is a school district looking at that? Because one of the things that has happened in society is much of the ethical platforms in kids between zero and five is formed in the home, which means they are subject to social media. Their ethics, their morality is formed and sort of developed along those platforms. And we believe at least when they come to us, we are affected by that. And we want to give every kid in the world that's born in our district the opportunity to come in and be given tremendous support and developing to their maximum ability. One of the things that you're going to see us ask very shortly is we work diligently on a resolution that will go forward if approved tonight, and testing in fairness. Now, one of the things we want to make pristine clear is we are not attacking any of the other three educational options that are afforded to a citizen of the state of South Carolina. We're just asking that we be allowed commensurate exposure to our colleagues and the other three options as a public school district, that we are allowed to also enable the citizens of the state or the county, the district, to see the same information in our good partners in the other three options that we produce, which are the scores, the demographic composition of our particular district, our student body. And so we think that will help a citizen be very much enabled to make the best decision, and all four options are available to them. We're not being pejorative towards any other option, so we want to make sure we reemphasize that. So with that, we look forward to continuing this work. We solicit your input. We're trying to be very open. And so with that, Mr. Chair, we will conclude our presentation unless there are questions.
Questions or comments?
There is a motion that was recommended coming out of committee. I move that Beaufort County School, I move that Beaufort County School Board adopt the following motion, a resolution, excuse me, resolution. I, the resolution is Beaufort County School Board believes that private religious and homeschools who accept student spending, public funds for their educational expenses should be required to take all federal and state mandated assessments required of public school students.
Any discussion?
Thank you. I do applaud the Legislative Chairman's focus on private school choice and vouchers. I think it is going to be a very substantial impact on public schools and in Beaufort County. A lot of states are starting to adopt this. I think it's a question of not if, but when we do have some sort of private school voucher program, and we need to be laser-focused on making sure that we are prepared as possible. I'm on the record as being opposed to these tests in general, these standards-based tests. I think that they are outdated and unsophisticated and have led to tremendous harm in the public education system. So I would not support expanding that to private schools and charter schools. I would prefer to have a resolution that said that we are offered the same flexibility that they're offering to private schools and homeschools and charter schools. So for that reason, I cannot support this motion, this resolution. But the other thing I wanted to point out is there are three parts to how we are going to compete with private schools. And as my children have all graduated from Hilton Head Public High School, in my personal belief, public schools are a vastly superior option for all students. And we are, I'm not afraid of any competition from private schools, public schools, and charter schools. But there are three aspects of the testing thing. It's not just the testing, it's also how it's published, right? They are not required to publicize the results as we are. And it's also not tied to accountability. So regardless of what test they take, it is really important that the results be publicized, that there be a way for people to compare them accurately, breaking them down by the different groups, just like we do, and that accountability is, if they are not making their goals on these tests, whatever test they decide to use, they should be subject to the same level of accountability. So I, and for those reasons, will not be supporting this resolution at this time.
I have a preliminary question. Being that she made the motion and she is not supporting it, then what will that?
You can make a motion as like a secretarial role and not be in support of the motion.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. Thank you for the Republicans, you know, cousin. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, we call the question. All those in favor of the resolution, please raise your head and say aye. Aye. Online? Pastor Gordon? Pastor Gordon, aye. Ms. Gordon? Aye. Mr. Small? Mr. Small is an aye. And they, one they, motion carries. All right, that concludes your report.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you all board members.
Superintendent's report, sir?
Thank you, sir. This evening, under Superintendent's report, we have two items under Student Achievement, one item under Fiscal Responsibility, and one item under Other Matters. So under Superintendent's Report, Student Achievement, we have first, the Primary Education Thinking Skills Initiative, which I'm going to ask Dr. Stratos to come forward and introduce.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Rodriguez and Chairman Guyer. This evening, the Instructional Service Division has two presentations. The first presentation will be by Scarlett Mooney, and the second will be focused on a third grade retention. Ms. Mooney will share information on primary education skills, also referenced as PETS. The initiative was piloted during this current academic school year and is being prepared for implementation during the upcoming school year. With this, I bring forward our Director of Tides and Innovative Programs, Mrs. Scarlett Mooney. Ms. Scarlett?
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Colonel Guyer, board members, Superintendent Dr. Rodriguez, and members of the community. Thank you, Dr. Stratos, for for that introduction. As she said, my name is Scarlett Mooney, and I'm the Director of BCSD Tides and Academic Special Programs. I'm honored to speak with you this evening about a program that directly supports an important goal in our district's strategic plan, ensuring that our students become critical thinkers, problem solvers, and independent learners. I'm here to share the progress and future vision of the Primary Education Thinking Skills Program, also referred as PETS. You should have an executive summary that provides this overview. As you may know, Regulation IS9 outlines our responsibility to nurture intellectual curiosity and problem solving abilities in our students, beginning as early as possible. PETS directly fulfills this mandate. It is a systemized enrichment and diagnostic tool rooted in Bloom's taxonomy, designed to teach those foundational thinking skills through a combination of engaging stories, games, puzzles, and characters. PETS specifically targets students in first and second grade. The four types of thinking taught in PETS includes convergent, divergent, evaluative thinking, as well as visual and spatial reasoning. Together, they form a scaffold that supports academic success, not just in reading and math, but across all content areas. So you may ask, why PETS? Because when students are taught to think, they perform better. They develop grit, they persist when learning becomes challenging, and perhaps most importantly, they begin to see themselves as capable problem solvers, a mindset that we know contributes to long term success. The overall benefits are significant. One of the critical advantages for providing PETS in early childhood is that it lays a strong foundation for future academic programs such as Avid, IB, AP, and Cambridge classes. It also aligns with our assessments such as the Naglary General Assessments, the next, excuse me, the Naglary General Abilities Test and the Performance Task Assessments. In this slide, you will see the characters. I would like to introduce you to to a few. PETS has six characters that students will meet. Each character aligns with a specific type of thinking. For example, Dudley the Detective is a deductive thinker. He must use clues to find only one right answer without jumping to conclusions. Isabel the Inventor is a divergent thinker. She thinks creatively, will brainstorm ideas, and likes to find many answers. Each character has a purpose with aligned activities that connects and engages students to the various types of thinking skills. If you will, please go to the next. Allow me for a moment to show you an example lesson for Dudley the Detective. Please remember that Dudley is a deductive thinker. He must use clues to find one correct answer. In this lesson, who is Mary? Students are given four clues. They must use the clues to help find Mary. Entertain me for a second and see if we can find Mary. Clue number one, Mary has long hair. Mary does not play with dolls. Mary likes to skate. Who is Mary? Hopefully, we thought through each of those clues, not jumping to conclusions, to find the one right answer. And hopefully, we all came up with the same answer, right? This past year, PETS was piloted in four elementary schools, St. Helena Elementary, Beaufort Elementary, Red Cedar Elementary, and Bluffton Elementary. In-service training was provided to our teachers, and ongoing professional learning will continue into this next school year to ensure the program's success and sustainability. As we look ahead to the 25, 26 school year and beyond, we envision PETS playing a key role in helping us reach our district's goal of 75% math and reading proficiency in 2029 as measured by SC Ready. To close, PETS is more than just a curriculum. It is a commitment to cultivating the thinkers and leaders of tomorrow. It's our responsibility to the profile of the South Carolina graduate, a promise to equip every child with the skills they need to think and thrive in college, career, and life. I would like to thank you for your continued support as we work to grow all students.
Do we have questions? I have a question. What research is this based on?
So that's a great question. Primary Education Thinking Skills does have research and evidence based. It is a curriculum that is probably close to 40 to 50 years old, and it does have research that supports that it grows students in their thinking ability, because it is a very systemized strategy that's very targeted to those specific thinking skills. Yes.
Mr. Smith?
So with the, with these dogs, excuse me, who's all trained to deal with these dogs?
The pets, the characters?
Uh huh.
Yes. Great question. So we have a GT lead teacher in each building that that went under the the initial training for this school year. So this coming school year, we will work with our GT lead teachers in addition to first and second grade teachers, so that we are able to to implement this in the way that it was intended.
Okay, okay, um, okay.
Thank you.
But basically, that person is a dog handler, then? Is that, is that my, is that my assumption, or maybe?
These characters are exactly as you see here on the screen. They're not actual pets. They are the characters here that you see on the screen. They're kind of timeless, right?
Yeah, I see that, but my understanding it, when you said they were in pets, pets at the school, so I'm, I'm envisioning an actual real dog in the school, so that's...
No, great question. So PETS is in the acronym for Primary Education Thinking Skills, P E T S.
Okay, well, I ain't sure I'm the only one there. Maybe I'm, you know, maybe I got a little, little lot, but yeah, that's, that's what I was, that's what, when you said pets were in the schools, that's, that's, that's what I, you know, envisioned, yeah.
Yes, yeah. I'm glad that you asked that clarifying question. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
So Chairman Guyer, I have the opportunity of following up to build on conversation, actually, where Mrs. Boatwright had brought forward on testing and impacts. So as you may recall, you have documentation, there's two parts to it. One is, thank you, Mrs. Cushenberry, appreciate it. Within this document, there is an executive summary, and then I provided you some research. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Cushenberry to go first to the executive summary. And this section of the presentation is about third grade retention. Your package actually has a table of contents, and I'm going to have you look at page two. As we look at the very top of the executive summary, I want to share with you that what you have right in front of you is in the updated law. The original law was in place since 2017 for here in the state of Florida. In 2024, and for this academic school year to 24, 25 school year, a threshold mark for retention was increased. I had shared that to you previously, board members, that students in order not to be retained would now have to go another 70 points as they were doing their summer school So the executive summary in the beginning shares with you the requirement by law, also gives you four good cause exemptions. One is with regard to a student who is limited English proficient. Second, good cause exemption for a student being retained at third grade would maybe a student who 504 or their IEP was not met. Or a student who actually attends our summer camp that is required by law and scores the new threshold point of 489. In the past, it was 419. Or a fourth, a third grader who demonstrates their ability to, although they've sat for the tests in the summer, but they didn't meet that 489. There's a petition that can go forward for that as well. If you look at page three, at the core of the law by our Department of Education legislation is the opportunity of students to transition from learning to read to reading to learn. That's a language that many of you have heard before, and you actually cited yourself. Page three gives you a little more detail on the good cause exception, exceptions. And I'd like you to take a look at page four, which gives you the immediate update change from the 2017 to the 2024 legislation. I want you to look at the first bullet for a reason, because if you see the very first line, it says increasing the threshold for retention to the lowest achievement does not meet has two levels. So if a student does, does not meet one, those are the students who would be looked at for potential retention. Does not meets two, although they're not scoring at a level of proficiency, the state, we do include them into our summer school program, but is not under the legislation to be mandatory retention. Part of your executive summary has additional documents for you to review. If you look at Appendix A, it will be found on page five. It actually gives you this decision tree that is used by our schools. The very first line shares with you student scores above, does not meet cut score, they are promoted. But if you look to the rectangle box to the right of that, a student who scores at or below does not meet cut score, and let's remember, does not meet one, it gives you to listen once again, a summary of the exemptions for good cause. And then it shares with you, if they have one of those exceptions for good cause, they could be promoted. If not, they are required to attend summer school. Four, what your question was, Chairman Guyer, is really the research behind retention, if I'm correct. Page six gives you our decision tree, the process that we do at the school site as well as at the district. Your first quarter is where we give notice to families, Mary did not do well. Mary's may not make it to the next grade level. What is that based on? Our fall diagnostic. She's on a pathway, she may not be able to be promoted to fourth grade. At November, parents are given another notification. Mary is still not meeting that potential projected projection. I'm not saying that Mary's going to go there, but in the meantime, the schools are also putting in place interventions to help Mary meet. And you could see it goes from first quarter to second quarter to third quarter, fourth quarter, if a child has not met, again, does not meet one, then we are enrolled into summer school. But if you go to Appendix C, page seven, what I've given you is a table that shares with you negative impact, neutral impact, and positive impact of a student being retained. And I'll pause to let you review that. I think that's important, because I believe that was your central question for the presentation. And as you go forward to page eight, there's a few studies that come forward. One was conducted in Mississippi, where they have shown that there's been a significant growth in reading and students going forward who had been retained. But I have to give a roadmap of caution, because no state has the same requirement of what a passing score is. You may be Mississippi, you may be Florida, you may be South Carolina. It may be 414, 421, 489. So if you hear that flexibility, so let's recognize, it is not a unified threshold. The research also shows as you read that, yes, there has been an immediately increase of students who were retained and they're at their standardized test score the following year. They're not able to determine two points. One, is it because if I maybe, I don't want to be retained again? Well, it worked, put pressure on Mary. Or two, is it because I did get another year of education? That's the point that the research has not been able to be definite to define. What is that intrinsic motivation within that child to not be retained again? Or really, was it the intervention put in place to help Mary improve? So as you turn to page nine, that's where I make emphasis for you to see this, setting the passing score, it fluctuates from state to state, that's in your first paragraph. But one thing that did come out from the research that I reviewed is that middle grade retention does have an impact, has a greater impact upon the learner than elementary. So I do want to share that with each of you. And if you look down to the last paragraph on page nine, basically, it talks a little bit, a little bit about the intervention. And I have to say this, South Carolina requires intervention for every student who has been retained. They require a reading plan. It must be followed and reviewed and follow on the multi-tiered system, right, MTSS, of support that we are familiar with. So if a child is retained, it just doesn't, oh, you're retained. No, Mary gets placed on a reading plan, an academic plan for support that must be maintained and confirmed that it is being followed. And then as you go to page 10, there are three different studies that I'm sharing with you. One that was conducted in the New York City Public Schools, you're familiar with the size of it, so they had a very good denominator to take, to keep it into simple language, right, to, to take a look at the research study. The second one was conducted in Louisiana. And the third one actually was probably one of the most recent that I was able to pull, and that was out of the Harvard Graduate School of Education, where really did say that post-COVID, if you pull the research, there has been a positive impact of retention at elementary. And we recognize that because we've lived through the four years of shift of our students' learning. So I didn't want to put the direction either way, if it's a good thing or bad, but I did want to share with you that the most current research is showing a trend, that retention may be good to catch up for the gap that we had had of students not attending school on a regular basis. Your last page actually references the resources that were utilized, and with that, it closes the presentation, board members.
Mr. Dallas?
Thank you, Dr. Stratos. This was a very impressive research and and your sharing with us. One of the things that fascinated me is with all those different tests in different states and situations, it, it said that quite often by eighth grade, the advances had sort of disappeared. Yes, ma'am.
That it is a plateau effect that happens on, at that acceleration that they saw happen to the student who was retained at earlier years. But let's also take into consideration what the research didn't define was the complexity of the standards that happened as the student moves from eighth grade into high school, sir, because there is a significant jump. Because there is a significant jump.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've been kind of interested in this because of Mississippi, the Mississippi miracle, right?
Yes.
And I think that part of that is a complete and wholehearted dedication to the science of reading. I think that the research is coming out pretty clearly that the science of reading and phonics-based reading interventions is, is the way to go. Are we 100% science of reading? Are we, like, where are we on the scale? I know there's some exceptions for some different, you know, disabilities and whatnot, but where are we on that?
Actually, Mrs. Boatright, it's a great proposition you're bringing forward. South Carolina went into place three years ago for the science of reading through letters. It was a requirement for our pre-K up through third grade. We've actually had schools who have gone further to work with our students with disabilities. This year, the state of South Carolina is actually doing train-to-trainer model for our special ed educators so that we could go cast a net larger to have more of our educators picking up the skills of the science of reading. So it's state law. It is a requirement as it is in Georgia as well, our sister state.
So is the answer 100%, then?
I can't say 100%. I would say that we are getting there because they've given a five-year transition, ma'am, because we are talking throughout the state educating. But I want to add one more item to that is that we also have Wilson Reading, which is designed for the science of reading as an OG, Arthur Gillingham, which has been utilized with our older students who, who are special ed to help them acquire the science of reading as well. So our district was a little ahead on some areas and then the state. So we are transitioning. So I can't say we'll ever be at 100% because it's not a requirement at the high school. The teachers at the high school, a student should have that capability. And that's when we are building that capacity of the special ed educator with letters, Wilson, as well as Arthur Gillingham.
Would it be a fair assessment to say that we are strongly moving in that direction, particularly in the lower, you know, elementary school?
Absolutely. As well as our local schools of education is now requiring as well to have embedded letters as a practice because they recognize within their own school of thought, there wasn't enough of the science and practice of language acquisition.
The other thing is, I actually personally, I'm intrigued by this idea of third grade retention because in the community, I'm going to get from people all the time is, why aren't they holding people back in third grade? I hear that a lot, like, like apparently, and I do, I, a member of my own family was held back. Like there, it was pretty common to be held back in second or third grade if you couldn't read. We didn't have all these levels. But, you know, you just got held, you got held back and you took the year over again. So I actually have heard that multiple times. When I read this stuff about Mississippi and where I think they went from 49th to ninth or something in reading and, and state rankings. And it's, it showed a sustained impact because that was, we're now at like 12 years out from when they started doing that.
Almost, yes. But I do want to share again, think about what the passing threshold.
Correct.
That, that's.
And all these, you know, there's so many variables, right, to work out. But I do think it's something to consider exploring. And I think we have sort of negatively, had a negative perception of, of retention at a second or third grade. Stigmatized, that's what I was looking for.
Yes, ma'am.
That we have kind of stigmatized that in a way that doesn't make sense to those of us who graduated in the, you know, were in elementary school in the seventies and eighties because it was just, it seems to me anyways, a more common event. And I just wonder, as we look at this, to really consider what, I, I do think the Mississippi, the data is pretty rock solid.
It is. That, that as well as the Harvard study that is continuing actually is showing a shift because again, I do want to say with the impact of students having not had a continuum right into school since 2020, we had a gap at students attending. They're showing that the retention is having a positive impact. It goes back to the statement, the, the child is having more time in school.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The questions? I have, I have a question, a comment. I'm sure it's not a surprise at third grade that the student is having trouble with reading. I am certain that that problem is identified in first grade and second grade. And so what kind of intervention is happening in first and second grade to help ensure we have fewer people at risk in third grade?
So there's two things. One, obviously was pets. The second is what Mrs. Boatwright had shared is letters, a requirement. And then putting in place for us as a system, putting an intervention of using iReady, reading, which actually gives an opportunity for the child to go on a pathway of their learning as they acquire the language of reading, the skills of reading. And then that gradually sort of shifting your reading skills to become more of a learner. So we as a system have put items in place to help provide intervention. So iReady is not the curriculum. It's a support tool for our younger grades. And then at the middle school, for vocabulary and reading comprehension, we've put reading plus in place that complements what we have in our English Language Arts classes.
Now, the other part of this is the parents. And letting the parents know in first and second grade and third grade that there's some concern about your child's ability to read. This is what we're doing and helping the parents know how they can help. That's, that's another part to this. As well as educating parents that human brain development is not constant. I mean, every individual, it develops at different levels. And just because your child is having difficulty in first, second, and third grade doesn't mean that their brain's not going to catch up at some time. So that they can understand the stigma of being held back. It's, it's not your fault. Although, I think one of the things we have to look at is the absentee rate during those first two or three years to see if there's, that's a causal that could be affecting it. If the child's not in school or not in school as often as they should be in school, that's another issue that has to be identified. So there's a whole lot to this that I just want to make sure that our parents are involved and that we have, have good ways to share with them. This is what we see. This is what we plan to do. And this is how you can help.
If I may, Chairman Guyer, first item actually is through our superintendent, he has challenged our division that we need to bring what we know to the community. Hence, we recognize, you know, we do have our extended learning sites, but keeping the knowledge within the house, so the school isn't the pathway to go. So we've challenged within our division. Actually, we need to take what we know to, out to the community. So that's being worked out through Dr. Campbell's shop, our parent engagement. We've now taken a larger initiative there. You spoke a little bit about the younger grades. South Carolina, South Carolina in the 2024 legislation update is now required that first graders, if they're not meeting, they are to be retained as well. And second, second grade, not retained, but attend our summer school programs as well as potential second graders. So you're going to see next year, first graders attending summer school. And then the second graders the following year will be a requirement. They've put that into place without making a fiscal. So that's the second item to keep, keep in mind. And building that capacity of our educators and quality education is something that I think you're also driving to. What else are we doing, sir? Picking it up. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Smith?
Just to kind of speak on that, you know, I hear a lot of times about students missing days and which, which I, I was at a meeting and someone, we were talking about that and my question is how engaged, but yeah, let me back up. Do we have a social worker in every school?
The answer to that is yes, sir. And I could turn to Mrs. Walton, but my answer, I believe, is yes. And we have a lead contact who I believe is Andrea Murray at the district level.
Right. So, so with that being said, the question then becomes how engaged our social workers are, are, because if these, if these students are not in school, then at some point in time, someone has to be held accountable. And so we, we can't continue to have this conversation to say, well, they ain't coming. Hell, if they ain't coming, then let's, let's go to the parents and find out why they're not coming. And also, let's understand if the students are not coming, what resources can we offer to make sure that they are, that they are coming? Because I, I think that there's a piece here that has to be a conversation. And I'm not sure how we get this, well, I'm sure how we get the conversation started. You know, we, we just, we just got to take immediate massive action to make this happen. But my, my, my understanding is that that is one of the social, that is one of the part of the, the social workers. That's, that's a part of their wheelhouse. So if we have them and they're employed, then it's not a, 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 a question about students are not, are not, are not coming to school. So what are, what are we doing as a district? Because we can hold the parents, we can, we can say that the students aren't coming, but we also have to be held accountable too. What are we doing to say, oh, we, we've made sure, we, we've tried to get the students to the district or we've done this. You know, what have, what have we done to aid and help these parents? Because I, I balance you. I've, I've heard, I've heard some, in fact, I've, I've heard from, I've watched some districts do parent university and what that looks like. I think that we could possibly do a little more in the parent university. And I think that meeting the parents and talking to the community is what is one thing that we have to get more active in. Because we can't just say, oh, it's the parents, it's the parents. Some, some parents may not, may not have the skills or they may not have the know-how or they may not have the resources to understand what's going on because math ain't math no more. Two, something, I was talking to my cousin that he was saying, man, look, it helped me out. He's like, um, my son's, I was working on something and two plus, two plus two ain't four no more. Like, what's going on with that? So therefore, with, with times that are changing in, in how math is mathing, there, there, there are a bunch of nuts and bolts that this is not a one shoe, one size shoe, fit all of it. But there is some work to be done here in terms of parent engagement and how we can involve, involve parents. And so with, with that being said, I, I see he's ready to talk, but I, I not let, I let go, but I think that the, the main thing is how are we utilizing our social workers to, to, to help, to help that along with parent university move, moving forward?
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, I want to be clear, you know, that is work that our social workers engage in. So I want to make sure we're not making the assumption that our social workers are not engaged in that work. They actually are. And I think what would you highlight, something that would be, I think, in my opinion, really important is for a future topic to sit here and have some of our, our lead social worker come and talk about the work of social workers. Actually, it's probably more appropriate for an academic committee and then a report out from the academic committee. But I think it would be helpful for, for you and other board members to bring some clarity around the work of social workers because it does encompass what you're talking about. And they're out there doing that work too. So I think it's important to have that conversation. You highlight a very good point.
And I'll just say, let me make it clear for record. I'm not saying because I don't have the facts in front of me, so I don't want to assume social workers aren't, aren't working because I know, I know some social workers and I have cousins that are social workers in my family in one county and who, who's saying that their caseloads, you know, may, may, may differ, but they make sure that they, that they get the job done and I got, no, I know one who go, who does, who does house calls. And they're out doing, they're out doing house calls very regularly and late at night. And so once again, my, my question goes back, I mean, my, my main part of it also goes back to the parent university and how we engage them in this and, and, and how we utilize, utilizing them in terms of changing, changing what these numbers represent.
Mr. Dallas?
Yeah, um, excuse me, excuse me. Um, one of the things I've learned is, is how important it is between birth to five. And really, we need to, as a society, have some honest conversations about the impact of one, single parent homes. And I'm not being, you know, descriptive in the orientation or the mindset. I'm just saying rearing a kid is a challenging thing. And if they don't get that nurturing that I've learned is so critically important, you know, it's an uphill battle. So I think we need to start at the societal level and create things that help people understand it benefits not only the two people who are parents, but also the society at large and the generations going forward. And that's a tough conversation to have. And I've been trying to do it since I've learned how critically important that is. And people think, well, you got all this and this and this and that. No, no, no. It's, uh, we all have been through things. So I, I think to the point that Mr. Smith is raising, I think maybe increasing the, the decrease in the span that a social worker has to cover. Uh, and because your parents as teachers, I was shocked what they actually do. And those two people who won national awards are so passionate about it. I met one in the library and I had my name tag on and she stopped and she started talking. And she could, if I had been able to, I could have stayed there 30 minutes and she would have still been talking. And that's the type of passion that she had about what she was doing. So to your point, it's effective. We may need to come to grips with sufficient funding to have greater impact within the district. Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman, Chairman Guyer, if I could just build on both of the gentlemen. We have a, again, thank you to our finance and Dr. Rodriguez's communities and schools. We've been able to fund two additional personnel, specifically one for Whale Branch Elementary, one for Whale Branch Middle, who will do wraparound services to help our families. They'll each do 50 caseloads to help build and increase the amount of services to children. It's a pilot this coming academic school year. Been able to put that in without increasing costs. We just deducted 18% from another budget. And that makes end. Communities and schools has picked up 50% of the individual salary. I'll bring you information that to academic committee in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item. Oh, pardon me, Ms. Gordon? Ms. Gordon, go ahead.
Ms. Cushionberry and our tech team, the screen is off, so I'm not sure if that is impacting her ability to communicate right now. Ms. Gordon, we, um, we see you back up again. And if you can go ahead and, and speak, then we'll know you're connected to us.
Doesn't look like we're having any luck. It's very frustrating. Very frustrating.
Well, let's, if someone can call her and put the mic to the phone.
Can we, can we call her and see if we can get her on the phone, Ms. Cushionberry?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Hello, Mr. Chair and board members and people who are listening, the community. Very quickly, I just want to thank Dr. Stratus and her team for, for this report. I, I'm hearing what she's saying. And I hear you, Mr. Dalton and Mr. Smith. Uh, we do need to know what our social workers are doing. And they're doing an awful lot. And parents are doing an awful lot. But when you have a mother with five children from pre-kindergarten on up to the eighth grade, someone is going to fall somewhere in that, in that arc. One of those children will not, will not be able to read as he or she, she should. So this is very impactful. It's a very good information that was shared today. And I hope that when we come back in August, that we have some more information. So I'm going to hang up because I know I'm hardly coming through. But again, I just want to thank Dr. Stratus and her team and all of you for this valuable information today.
Thank you, Dr. Stratus.
And as you walk away, Dr. Stratus, would you also add coaches into that, literacy coaches into that as well? And as you walk away, um, Dr. Stratus, would you also add coaches into that literacy, coaches instead as well, into that equation when you bring something back? Thank you.
Speaking to the microphone, so we can hear you, please.
Said from that discussion with Dr. Stratos, we went off into a lot of different tangents. So I want to make sure that you actually need her to come back with the information you're asking her to present. Because we did go from pets to retention to social workers to what was which is now? Go shadow, go shadow the coaches, go shadow those social workers. I don't think she needs to come back with something that we can obtain our knowledge of in a different aspect than a long meeting or asking her to do extra work. You're putting a lot of work on her when you're trying to say we might have a lot of work on the social workers. I'm just.
Uh, carry on to that.
Cause I can, even if you want to ask me in academic committee without her having to do an extra report, I can give you that information or what social workers do.
Oh, um, I I think that uh it it would be quite easy. I think I think that you're absolutely you're absolutely uh wrong, because because due to due to the fact that if if she's already doing this work, then what I'm asking her for is when she went, when when we said that our students are failing, then I'm asking her in to who, what, where, when, why, and how, and asking her also, how are we how are we using coaches? Because we have literacy, we have coaches in schools that are working on these on these skills. So therefore, the same way how we talk about the social workers. So we have a a team of people and also said that it's not a one size uh shoe fits all. Somehow, and correlation understanding, because at at certain times of the year, in the in the past, people come up and and say, well, hey, well, we need coaches, well, hey, what are the coaches doing? Hey, we're social workers. So therefore, are we getting a clear understanding in terms of the bottom line? And the bottom line here is students. So we I want a better understanding in terms of coaches, social workers, how they helping this district in terms of the bottom line? What role are they playing for not not just for me to get information on the side on the sidebar conversation with Dr. Stratos, but for the community to understand, because I have people questioning me too as well. Ask it, ask it, ask me.
Shadow the social workers. Then go shadow the coaches.
Parents and community members don't, they they can't go, they can't.
Share that out to your constituents that are always asking you these questions. I'm getting.
That's your that's your that's your that's your opinion.
Opinion, but did you hear Dr. Strato say anything about any specific number of students failing? She just gave you information and you went ahead and said, social workers aren't doing their jobs. And then you heard someone else say a statement and took it forward and said, parents aren't doing their jobs or parents are being blamed. And you're asking her to do work that is unnecessary. Go shadow. Go see it firsthand and share it out.
And once again, I would I would say that that's your opinion.
And that's my opinion, and I hope you attend the academic committee meeting to get this information.
I've been this board for eight years.
Most times you ask for people to come back and share information and don't even attend the meetings.
And I've been this board for eight years and I I there are very similar meetings that I miss.
We're we're getting off.
To be quite accurate.
We're getting off the topic here. Uh, we can clear this up after the meeting. We can have a little talk and and work this out.
Yeah, that I ask, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is goal number three, fiscal responsibility. And Ms. Crosby is coming forward to provide the latest and final budget update.
He just stole my thunder. Uh, no, I'm just teasing. Um, last evening, we attended the third and final reading of the budget at County Council, Beaufort County Council meeting at Burton Wells Park. I'm happy to say first we were we were first on the agenda after the public comments. So it was a not as lengthy as evening as we thought. And second of all, it was a unanimous vote in favor of the school district's budget. They were very complimentary of the work that we're doing, not just with the operating budget, but with debt and capital and projects and the and the work that we're doing there, finances and all uh as a whole package. So um they were very very gracious, very complimentary. We had no questions and that's all I have to report. Any questions on that? So we are preparing uh for the new year in the payroll department, uh taking the salaries, schedules and beginning our first paycheck of the new school year. So that's the work that uh my staff is already undergoing this week, so.
Thank you, Ms. Crosby, appreciate it. Uh, the next item on the agenda in the superintendent's report falls under other matters. And I see that uh Ms. Walton shifted over and was on deck, uh ready to go. Uh, this this item is discussion on how teachers are moved. And this is in relation to a question, uh future topic question from one of the board members, I think it was Ms. Gordon.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm gonna make this as painless as possible. So there are about three or four ways staff can be moved. And they are all governed by administrative regulations. And the responsibility is placed on the superintendent to move staff. He can also delegate that responsibility to his human resource officer. So employees can be moved voluntarily. And that is when they request to go to another building or another position within the same building. So that's on them. They can be moved involuntarily. And that is a decision made by the principal, the superintendent, or the H R department, because staff is over in a building and student growth does not warrant the number of staff members we have in that building. So teachers are moved based on that, based on their certification, their qualifications, and where the need is. They can be reassigned, which is pretty much an involuntary uh transfer. So if you're in a position in one building, there are not enough students in a particular class. The superintendent can close that class, reduce that staff, and put staff in other positions in the same building or in a different building. And the most significant way staff can be moved would be what we call RIF, a reduction in force. And that happens when the district financial issues might come up or a structural change in the system. That's when the superintendent can reduce those staff members and terminate those staff members based on the fact that the district does not need that support. But that is a move that the superintendent would have to bring to you as a board to have approved first. He has the option to first find alternate positions for those staff members. And that's what we've always done in Beaufort. I can remember only one time we've done a reduction in force. And that is when we move the hall monitors. I think, Mr. Smith, you probably remember that. So that is a a process that's very technical. And it is legal as well, because you have to look at all the staff members that you're hoping to terminate. And you have to look at their tenure, their certification, their service to the district, and make a decision as to who those people will be. That is very, very tenuous. And most of the time, superintendents stay away from that. If the superintendent decides that he's gonna reduce staff, he ever looks toward reduction in force, he reallocate allocates those positions somewhere else. So he repurposes those uh positions. But at any given time, he can move staff members based on what the needs of the district are. That is also noted in all contracts that teachers sign every year. That is a possibility that could be placed someone else based on the needs of the district. I will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Too much questions.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Sure, that concludes um superintendent's report.
We have board business action. Uh, we have Beaufort Jasper ACE Capital Project Transfer.
Um, a facilities assessment was done on Beaufort Jasper Academy for Career Excellence, uh which we share with Jasper County. Uh, that update uh that was updated in August of twenty twenty four. Red Iron Architects was the firm that uh performed that assessment and identified eleven million dollars of capital needs at the time. Uh, another two million dollars of needs were identified by the Beaufort County School District Technology Staff for Technology Projects. So the grand total at this point is thirteen million. Um, in on June eleventh, twenty twenty four, the board approved a motion that authorized the superintendent to negotiate with Jasper County School District the funding of capital projects for ACE in the amount not to exceed six and a half million dollars, funded by excess general fund balance at that time. Um, I believe that the full intent of the board was to actually use capital projects fund, old unused eight percent capital projects. So um and and throughout every debt report, uh we call it uh Debt Day Report in March, I have updated the board that what funds were available and that those funds were designated in the old unused eight percent, their bond premiums and interest, um that they were designated for ACE. So we have a a little bit of a conflicting um uh idea or or funding source that we do need to resolve. But the ultimate goal this evening is to inform you that um Jasper County School District has designated um one million dollars and has actually wired, and I've confirmed, a wire transfer into a new bank account at their Regions Bank, which they bank with. Um, and so that wire transfer occurred on June ninth. And uh that is intended for Beauf uh Jasper's a portion of to begin some of the construction projects for Beaufort Jasper ACE. Uh, those are designated into a separate capital projects account at Regions Bank. And so um Dr. Levickio and I opened the account and have it ready and provided wiring instructions. So at this point, we are requesting approval to move that million uh a million dollars from Beaufort County School District's eight percent funds into the same account to begin the work of building which projects will be needed and prioritized uh for ACE. So in order to accomplish this with an eight percent project funding source, we'll need to resolve the uh issue of June eleventh of the matter of the funding source indicating it was general fund, when in fact, I believe the intent was to do cap to make it capital projects. So I provided a few motions this evening. I think there's maybe some uh logistics that need to occur in order to do that, which may require a few motions. Uh, so bear with us on resolving those uh to fix to correct that and substitute the funding source. And then at the end, we'll come back with actually the request to transfer the millions. So it may be a little complicated, but uh I think Ms. Vote right, we're in good hands with her.
Vote for the kids at home, this is gonna be a lesson in parliamentary procedure. So first of all, according to South Carolina FOIA, we cannot change an approved motion if it's not on the agenda, which this is not. So this came about because of this um timely issue of transferring the money. And this is going towards security and safety projects at ACE. So the first thing we have to do is by a two thirds majority, make a vote to put this on the agenda for exigent circumstances. So I would like to make the motion that we amend the uh board meeting agenda for June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five to include a request to uh approve amend an already approved uh motion. Did you get that, Robin? I move, I know I misspoke. I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda for the June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five meeting to amend an already approved motion. And Wendy, at any point I get out of line and step in here. So we need a second. Okay, so we need two thirds majority vote in order to put this um item on the agenda.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I have one uh brief comment. Uh, I think it should be noted that um the cooperation from the Jasper side, uh the Jasper County School Board has been exemplary. Uh, they have re I know they have dealt with some challenging situations going back in the past. They're working through those, they're doing things the right way. They have stepped up and wanted to show Beaufort County that, yes, they passed a referendum, but they are making sure this money is clearly in the bank with co-ownership between when we put ours in there, if we put ours in there, in this group. Co-ownership between the two counties and that there's a superb partnership at this point in time. So I hope people will view it very positively relative to how uh the perceptions may have been in the distant past. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Oh, I go ahead and have a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Online, Pastor Gordon.
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Mr. Small.
Uh. Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, and.
Ms. Hay, she's on there.
That's Ms. Hay. And uh Ms. Gordon.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so now what we've done is we've put it on the agenda. So now that we've got it on the agenda, I need to make a motion to amend and replace the original motion. So I'm going to move that the Beaufort County Board of Education amend and replace the motion from June. Uh, well, do you want me to just do it the way you have it written on here, because you've got it? Okay, we'll just go that way. Okay, first, we're gonna make a motion to amend. I move that the Beaufort County Board of Education amend the motion passed on June eleventh, twenty twenty four, authorizing six point five million dollar uh for BJ ACE by substituting the funding source to the eight percent capital funds.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? All all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Online, I hear Ms. Gordon. Pastor. Now here, Ms. Hay.
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Aye, aye, all right. Ms. Small. And uh motion carries unanimously.
Okay, uh, so now we've moved to amend the motions. Now we actually vote on the amended motion. The amended motion is as read. I move that the Beaufort County Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to negotiate with Jasper County School District the funding cap of capital projects for the Academy of Career Excellence in the amount not to exceed six point five million to be funded by eight percent capital projects.
Second, discussion. All all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, you have a question?
I was gonna say, I was gonna say for the general public, could you give them a little a little background on that? Because I know we talked about uh about Jasper meeting us in the in the in the middle. So so that just if someone just tuning in, they can know exactly what we're voting on. I do have a problem with that. We move for it, there's a lot of money to move for, if we give them.
Happy to do that.
So so may I just give an overview? And then I'll turn it over, ask Ms. Ms. Crosby. Jasper County is making a very valiant effort to show that they're going to carry their half of the pie. And and we just had a larger amount that we were going to put in initially. But what we're right now, we're looking at is a million dollars from us and a million or so from from them. So that it's equal. And then as needs accrue, then we'll come back and maybe say we need to move more. Is that correct?
Yes, I would like to add to that. Um, so thirteen, so six and a half million that you're seeing today is half, exactly half of the thirteen million dollars. So what what I see those funds as are designated uh or committed eight percent funds that are will sit there untouched until the board decides to approve to transfer funds to ACE. So when once this million dollars, if if this million dollars is approved, there will be five and a half million remaining uncommitted. But I will not designate those for any other, or the district has not designated those for any other projects other than ACE. So those will remain an eight percent held until further approvals will be made to do capital projects. As Jasper's funds are released, we will release, we I will come back to the board for any other transfers that are needed in order to match their funds.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm sure the public appreciate it as well. Thank you.
Makes sense, thank you very much. And so it's been moved and seconded. Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, aye, here.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
All right, we are rounding third and heading for home. I move that the Beaufort County Board of Education approve a transfer of one million dollars to Beaufort Jasper Cad Academy for Career Excellence for the purpose of capital projects.
Second.
Got a second from Ms. Frazier. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pastor Gordon?
Alfonso, aye.
Alfonso, aye. Aye, aye. Motion?
Alfonso, aye.
Okay, we got them all.
I think that's all I had for that. We're all done. Four short motions later.
Yes.
We have one more motion that we have to do. Are we at that point now?
Yes.
Not, 8% will be the next topic.
That's what I'm waiting on. That's the only one we have left.
Okay.
Okay. So once again, we, on this item is for, as you recall, the board approved the 2027 list of 8% capital projects a few board meetings ago. That list was $35 million or just under that, $34,999. So the district has identified other 8% funds, bond premiums and interest. These are in addition to the $6.5 million that we have designated for ACE. So there are bond premiums and interest on 2019, 2020, '21, and '22 8% funds. So those can be utilized. We do have a board policy that requires us to use those funds to roll them forward, to roll them forward to a future year to be used for this particular purpose, for, to lower the borrowings of any capital projects. So we did identify $5 million of those bond premiums and interest, so we were able to lower the borrowing amount from, from $35 million to $30 million. So this evening, we're bringing forward a bond resolution. Ms. Franny Heiser is here with Burr Foreman, our bond counsel, and she will be going through the motions of the bond resolution with you. And at this point, I'll turn it over to her. And then we have a motion prepared. These are usually somewhat long because they're actually verbatim from the resolution itself. But I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Heiser.
Thank you. Colonel Guyer, members of the board, it's really nice to be with y'all. I always say it's that time of year again. There are two ways I can set my clock. Debt Day and Beaufort 8% Day. So I am, I am glad I am here. This resolution is substantially identical to the ones you've seen in the past. Delegates to the superintendent the authority to make certain detailed decisions. The amount that you would authorize, as Ms. Crosby said, was $30 million. I'd be glad to answer any questions y'all might have.
Questions?
I'm here for dinner, you too. But... And don't worry, I'm gonna be back in time to watch Jeopardy, just like we always...
Someone's gotta mute. Mute. Whoever's watching Jeopardy, mute.
Okay. All right. So we, go ahead and read the motion, please.
Okay, here we go. I'm all warmed up. All right. "I move that the Beaufort County Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not exceeding $30 million general obligation bonds, Series 2025C, or such other appropriate series designation of the School District of Beaufort County, South Carolina, fixing the form and details of the bonds, delegating to the superintendent of his lawfully authorized designee the authority to determine certain matters relating to the bonds, providing for the payment of the bonds and the disposition of the proceeds thereof, and other matter relating thereto." Thank you.
Second?
Second by Mr. Dallas. Any questions?
I just wanna say the motion said 30,000?
Yeah, we fixed that. I said 30 million. That was just for...
I've corrected.
They don't want to go through all that again.
Okay, are we all set? All right, we call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Online?
Pastor Gordon, aye.
I heard, I heard Pastor Gordon.
Alfonso, aye.
Ms. Smalls, aye. And Ms. Gordon? Ms. Gordon?
She might have muted. She might have been in Jeopardy.
She said aye. All right, we have, it passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir.
I've got some on the board business. I have a motion as well.
I'll get it in the board. Have a, have a motion, okay?
At this, at this time, I make a motion that, that the board, I make a motion that the board directs the superintendent to bring back a, to bring back information regarding metal detectors in the schools.
Second? Second by Ms. Fraser. Any discussion?
I have one. Is the motion really for metal detectors specifically or for broader array of security equipments?
Weapons detection systems.
Um, I, I can, I can, I can, I can put that in there. I can put that in there as well as weapons. What'd you, how'd you, what'd you say now? In terms of...
So, so maybe, maybe not just metal detectors.
Right, I just add to it. I just add to the motion as well as...
Weapons detection systems?
Weapons detection systems, security systems, et cetera, make it so that the superintendent has the latitude to, to see what's out there.
Okay, I add that in there. Put the... Okay, no problem, no problem, no problem. So I started out with, at this, at this time, the board directs the superintendent to bring back, to bring back information in regards to metal detectors and, as well as information regarding...
Security systems.
Security systems.
Detection systems.
Detective systems and, yeah, and etc., and etc.
Put that up on the screen, please.
I would add detection systems just to be, just to give it a little bit more... Detection systems. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Let's, please...
Leah seconded it. Right, Leah?
Yeah. And please, let's read it again a little louder so that everybody can hear it.
Motion to have the superintendent to bring back information on regards of metal detectors as well as security system and detection systems.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Okay.
Chloe, aye.
Aye. Okay. Any nays? Any abstentions? One abstention. Motion carries. Okay. Now we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Okay.
Chloe, aye.
Aye. Okay. Any nays? Any abstentions? One abstention. Motion carries. Okay. Now we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Got, heard that one. Online?
Alfonso, aye.
Alfonso, got it.
Pastor Gordon, aye.
Pastor Gordon? Ms. Hay, aye.
Chloe, aye.
Chloe, aye. Motion carries. Future agenda topics? Are there any future agenda topics? Okay, hearing none. We have an announcement. And Ms. Cushenberry? Come up to the podium. There you go.
I am happy to announce, very happy to announce, that I have a full-time assistant. Her name is Jemaya Johnson. She is a recent graduate of Georgia Southern. She is a graduate of Battery Creek High School. She is one of our own's, and so I want to welcome her and introduce her to you all.
Welcome.
Speech, speech. That's great. Glad to have you. Okay, we now have any agenda topics? Mr. Miller?
Topic is ban Management 101. Thank you again for letting me have a few minutes. I appreciate your time. Last meeting, I commented and thanked you, the board, and the administration of things that are happening to, to look into and improve the ban situation. I make this Management 101 comment that first you identify a situation, you implement it and see that it's going, but the main thing is at the end, you have a way of judging that it is happening as you anticipated or evaluating that goal. That's an area that I've been really kind of concerned about in the past. We make a suggestion, in fact, you folks as the board, I think four years ago, approved a new position for a coordinator of fine arts. And to the best of my knowledge, did the board ever come back and say, was it worth it? That's my point, is we've got to follow through on what we do and evaluate it, and I appreciate it. I, so I, my comments are, last board meeting, I said, thank you, this, I'm watching. Next board meeting, I'm going to give you some ideas about how the judges, that improvement is proceeding. Thank you again for all your time.
Thank you, sir. Next item is, I can't read it, is Ms. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Freeman, please. You have a student having problems with losing school computer and district locked him out.
Well, I got quite a few things I need to say. I hope I'm not time. But listening to what the staff had to say, I heard 13 million, 30 million, 8% bond, only thing I heard was a whole bunch of money everywhere. From the last meeting, which was June 11th, I had quite a few parents that reached out to me through Facebook, TikTok, calling me, you know? And the first thing that they said was, the district ain't shit. They said that they have protected their teachers and knowing that the teachers have been saying things to the students or bullying the students or whatever have you. So what they have done was protect their teachers and not give two shits about the kids. Don't care about the students. Okay? So I told them, well, why don't y'all come down to the board meetings? You know, I can't be the only one that come down to the board meeting and, and voice my opinion. So from what I was told, some lawsuits, I, there, this is there, that's there, whatever, whatever. Now, I don't have a problem with the district protecting the teachers. Good for them. But it's my duty as a mother, I'm going to protect my child, and I'm going to protect my son's education. Now with that being said, the last time I was here, June 11th, I stated that my son was being bullied by his father, which was his teacher. My ex-husband took upon himself to change my son's schedule and put him in his classroom. My son committed, had a plan to commit suicide. I came to y'all and I told y'all everything that was going on. I asked y'all, I told y'all, I said, I needed help for my son to receive summer school. The day after that, June 12th, the summer school teacher emailed me and she introduced herself stating that she will be my son's summer school teacher. Okay, that's, that's fine. My son will do summer school online at home. No problem. My son has been diligently doing his work. Now here comes yesterday, because my son also does his work on the weekend. Here comes yesterday, I woke my son up and I said, hey, Willow, it's time for you to sign in to your summer school so you can do your summer school. He said, mommy, I can't log in. That's weird. You wasn't, you did your summer school Sunday. You did it Saturday. He said, I can't log in. So, okay, no problem. I reached out to his teacher. His teacher said, well, we don't understand why he can't log in. She's sent me emails and things of that nature. This morning, I got a phone call from his assistant principal, and he stated that, hey, Ms. Freeman, I was told that you didn't get permission for Willow to receive summer school at home. I said, well, after I left the meeting on June 11th, June 12th, I got an email introducing that my, who my son's summer school teacher was.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, her time has expired.
Your, your time has expired.
Be consistent. It's not personal.
So what would you, what would you like me to do? Just, just cut it off or continue on?
You can come back at our next meeting. We have another public comment section. You can email any of the board members.
That's what I will do. Can I have all y'all's email, please?
They're all listed on the website, and I'll be happy to get the website link for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That is the last agenda item, and without exception, we will adjourn with unanimous consent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.